Time to have the December meeting where we can get this over and settle in on Christmas. Amen?
Amen.
All right, y'all stand, we'll have Russ Curry say a word prayer for that pledge, please.
Good evening, Heavenly Father, we come today to thank you so much for this awesome group of leaders in our community. We ask you of blessings and your safety for each one of us and each of our citizens during this holiday season. We're thankful for all the activities that we've had thus far, the parades and the giveaway to the needy. All the positive things that have been done in this community in the last couple of weeks is simply amazing. For that, we say thank you. So we pray that you continue to bless us so we can continue to be a blessing. In Jesus' name, thank God, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, everybody should have a copy of the minutes from the November 2022 Resident Meeting. We'll get approval of those.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we approved the November 22th meeting.
Okay, we have a motion by Patricia, second by Mr. Austin.
Okay. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yeah.
Austin?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the November 2022 financials. Y'all have a copy of that?
Yes.
Take this.
Go ahead. You got a question or discussion?
Uh, yes, I, I, I went through this each department here and got looking at it, and Carson helped me on this. But I got looking at it from a point of view that I see that we're gonna have to do something because I see a lot of negative, like the water department. And my way, we have minus eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Sewer department, hundred fifty thousand.
And you got to realize that does import appreciation.
Okay, but it's still quite big.
It's still a big negative.
Right. Uh, sanitation, we got three hundred twenty-two, four sixty-nine, rural water, deficit, water plant, river plant. But I'm just looking at this, reading why I'm saying this. When you look at the finance and you get negative with every department, that means you got to do something to get that out.
You got blessed this year that you weren't on the budget committee because they've been having to meet this out every other day. So you got blessed.
Yeah, but what I'm saying here, I, I, I want everybody to realize, and even for the general public to realize, we're trying to maintain with, with all of this, we, we mind thing. And somebody has to be down to help this.
You're, you're saying the budget committee is working on it. They're going to try to address these deficits with the next year's budget.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying.
We, we, don't worry about it. We, we all, we all looking at it, I guarantee you.
Okay.
I wouldn't want to be on the budget committee either.
Okay. All right.
Just gotta learn to do more with less. That's what we do.
Yeah, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to be some. It's gonna be tough, but we're gonna have to do it.
So you got any more questions about us?
No, I just want to address what I see y'all in mind. I'm worried we'll stop the financial report.
Who was that?
Carla.
We made a motion, Carla, second.
Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks? Austin?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Okay, and tonight's reports, uh, Danny, you got anything?
Hi, everyone. Um, I gave you all one of our monthly service reports here. We've had a wonderful holiday season, lots of events, our Christmas parade, breakfast with Santa, and the giving tree. Um, I think they were all very well attended. Um, we were able to provide, offer our community with our people's project again this year, be able to help some of our kids who are in need, we're able to have a Christmas this year and provide a wonderful Christmas for them. Um, we've also had a lot of community coffees. And then I gave you all, um, a calendar of events for January. I think the whole COVID bubble has popped out and people are in now. We've had coffees hand up pretty much literally, and we've got another river cutting, um, for business. And I put that on your calendar for you. Um, so I just wanted you all to have that information and wish you all Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Thanks for your service, Jim.
Looks like very busy January, Amy, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mary, ready for tonight's report?
Yes, you should have at your seat. I gave you, uh, a copy of all of the before and afters of the houses that were torn down. Uh, this does not include all the yards and the things that we've done. And you also have yourselves tagged over here as well, so. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to help answer them.
That before and after is a good way to do this.
Yeah, you just don't realize until you do it like that just what an improvement it is. Of course, the back two pages is, for two of them, that it's gotten too wet for Jason to get in there. So he's gonna have to, I guess, the last three until it dries up a little bit.
Anything else?
That was all I had tonight, thank you.
Hey, you got anything?
Yes, sir. We've had, um, three go through, um, Arkansas Water and Forest Academy. We had three graduate, um, Tyler Higgs, um, Zach Prince, and May McKinnon. Officer Prince there, Officer McKinnon, she couldn't be with us this evening. She's in Stuttgart with her classmates. He's part of that team, so she wanted to support him. Uh, Tyler, he and his family are out of town at the moment, but, um, we're also proud of them. I mean, that was, uh, a long three months of hard training, but they did it, and we're so proud of them. And I also want to, um, introduce Alicia. Uh, could you give them your name?
Alicia Page.
And she is our new secretary. She's gonna take Tammy Rose's place. And I want you all to be familiar with that smiley face. Uh, we, Sergeant Autry, he's been, uh, getting classes together and having different ones, uh, ten classes. Um, stand up and tell them who's here.
Uh, well, one of the classes that we have got for the PD is a car seat installation technician. So now anybody who has a newborn infant can come to the PD and, uh, our technician can show them how to safely install a car seat, which also with her having this technician, we can also apply for grants to give car seats to give out to the public. So that's something we're working on. But we were able to send one of our, um, officers, Penny Armstrong, here. Uh, she went to the class in last November, November, right, so last month. And, uh, we've got another one scheduled to go to the class in, um, January. So we'll have two technicians on that.
Tell them about, um, Sergeant Austin Verche.
Uh, Officer Verche, we got, we received a K-9 grant. Uh, so we about to have a K-9 officer. He was up our order, uh, law supplies, got his, um, unit ready for K-9. And the next step is to get developed, and he'll go to us and do that. Um, and then we've got, we've talked with prosecutor, and they are gonna give us some funds to send, uh, one of our officers to, um, a drug intervention class, which will teach, uh, officer how to get in the vehicles and where they're hiding the dope and stuff, which it'll also give you access to a website called, um, um, well, the class is called Desert Snow. The, I haven't heard of the website yet, but they'll have access to it, and which gives you tips and stuff of what's going on.
And, uh, Officer Heather Rogers.
Yeah, Heather Rogers would be going to that class. And then we've got a few other classes set up, um, throughout the year that we're just looking into. So we got a lot, a lot of things happening in PD.
And we had our Blue Santa program on, uh, this past Saturday, and it was a big, big time out. And we're very thankful they were able to, to put a smile on some young people's faces, and some moms and dads. But, um, we're, we have new plans for next year, and we'll keep you in touch on what we're doing. Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, uh, longtime watering and sewer superintendent, Kerry Nelson's gonna talk to us tonight.
Mr. Austin, in reference to what you were speaking of earlier, uh, we've been discussing the negatives on the water sewer, water plant, sewer plant, our river plant, and rural water. And, uh, I've talked with Bruce Bean, business manager, and Carl Dall Rempel, and, uh, they gave us, gave us some numbers that we need to look at as targets to increase our budget to, to increase our income to. So we are proposing new water rates, and, uh, I handed a sheet out there that's got it, the proposed water rate 2022. Uh, the reasons we're wanting to do this is because of, uh, the cost we incurred at the river, on our problems at the river intake, the rising cost of materials to maintain the distribution system and the treatment plants, uh, the increased expense of chemicals for wa- water treatment process. And the main thing is we're unable to continue to operate at a loss. We also, last year, the state legislature passed a new state law, Act 605, and that requires all city water departments to, uh, do a budget study every three to five years, I believe it is, and buy a independent, uh, group and develop a budget and stay within that budget. At this time, we're not under Act 605. But in the foreseeable future, the financial entities, I'm sure, will adopt these guidelines that, uh, has been put in play throughout the state. And, uh, we'll probably fall within those before long. However, at this time, we're not. But in order to maintain our system and stay within our operating expenses, we do need a rate increase. And our system has developed over time. We've got, uh, a lot, lot of new customers, especially on the rural system. And due to new customers, this increases the amount of time, the amount of water that we produce, the amount of runtime at our plant, the amount of operation time by our operators, the amount of electricity used. It's just, uh, we put out more, it costs us more. So we have, we are proposing to increase the water rates for the water system, the public water in, in the city, residential and commercial, and the rural water system by five dollars per month for the meter fee and one dollar increase on the water usage fee. And the impact of this would be on a regular customer, the average use for a customer is thirty-five hundred gallons per month. A customer using thirty-five hundred gallons a month, their bill would increase by eight dollars and fifty cents a month. And that's the, the rate we're proposing. Uh, the second sheet I handed out that looks like this, we looked at four different, uh, rates. The top rate was the one that was recommended, uh, that everyone agreed that would be the one that, that they recommended that we implement. And it shows you there the increase for the Prescott Water Light PWL and the increase for the rural. It would increase our annual income by a hundred eighty-five thousand on the water system in town and seventy-nine thousand in the city. This is based on active water meters, uh, over the last year and actual water usage that was billed over the last year. It's a annual, it's a yearly average to come up with these numbers. Any questions?
We still will be, um, surrounding water rates.
Yes, sir, actually, we, uh, our, our rate, city rates are, we're surrounded by rural systems. Rural systems have high rates because they're spread out and they've got fewer customers over larger areas. Since we have the city along with the rural, our rates are historically less than the surrounding systems. Hope is gonna, undergoing a, uh, rate increase that's so much per year for the next, I don't know, five years or ten, five years, I think. And they're stepping theirs up. They're stepping their water and electric too, I think, over a stepped increase. This is the first, the last time we increased, uh, was in 2017. And once again, the reason for this, prices are crazy right now. We're, things that cost fifty dollars last year now cost seventy-five and eighty dollars. And, uh, equipment, uh, I just priced a fitting for, uh, one of our sixteen-inch line. Two years ago, it was four hundred dollars. Last week, it was thirteen hundred dollars for the same fitting. Increases like that, we can't just continue to go ahead and buy the materials we need, but pay more, but not have any more income to pay for them. So once again, we can't continue to operate at a loss. We need, we need some help to operate within, within our budget, within the, the black instead of the red.
There's no other way that we can do this because we know about the data folks being so high. Uh, it's not gonna sit well with people, but I know everything is going up this time of year.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, but everything that we do has increased. Uh, electric cost, we not only, all of our electric expense doesn't come off the city grid. We, we operate off of, uh, energy as well. And with the rural stations and, uh, the, the river plant, uh, operates off of energy, and they're increasing their fuel charges and all, just like we're struggling with here in the city. And so everywhere we turn, fuel's more, electrics, electricity's more, uh, maintenance is, is, uh, increased. So, uh, we utilize, in the last year, we utilized that rescue money to, to help down at the river. But, uh, it depleted our, our depreciation fund was depleted before we started borrowing off the rescue fund. So we were lucky to have that, or we would, uh, be in a lot, a lot more of a tight than, than we are. Which is not saying we're not in tight, but I don't know of anything else. The mayor has, has looked, trying to figure out ways to do it. And after a while, you see a rate increase is about the only way to go. And I visited with the mayor, and he wanted to go ahead and, and have a ordinance ready this evening if y'all were, uh, favorable to, to a rate increase. I think y'all have one in your packet there to, to look at.
So are you saying that we need to do this tonight? We need to put it tonight, or do we need to, uh, is that what you're saying?
Oh, yes, yes, because we need to get our numbers started for January.
So we, we, uh, we, so what I'm saying?
For the 2023 budget.
Yeah. That's what I was told. Now, it'll take the process to get it done. It takes, is it for a month to publish it and all that, or what is, what's the process once they vote to do it? You have to publish it for a month or before you can?
Yeah, it, it has an emergency clause in it, so it will be effective immediately on passage of publication.
Okay.
Those are in the paper.
We'd have to publish it one time, so it would be?
The, I, I, I don't have a problem with approving this, but the only thing I, I, I have concern about, if we just go ahead and boom, just like, like this, then it's gonna be a lot of our community people are not gonna understand why we are increasing. I, I, like, all that you gave, I wish someone, we should let the general public know this is why we are increasing it. Then, then just say boom. Because, you know, we, we're gonna have, have a lot of, a lot of comments about the increase. And we know we need the increase, but I think the public needs, I don't know how we can do it now since we're at this point. But I'm just saying, general public needs to know we are increasing because it's necessary for us to do it because we're at a loss. That's the only thing I'm saying, you know? Because if you go and boom, we're at City Council, we're responsible. So, so we're, we're walking kids out of the flat from us, and I know it's necessary. But the general public needs to know, we, we've been putting this thing off a long time. Barry, you had mentioned it before, and I have too. But, but we, all of a sudden, here we go, boom, and people gonna say, hey, I'm already paying. It's there. But I think the general public, I don't know how we can do this. Glenn, how, how can we get around this, the public knowing before we really, really?
Well, I mean, there, I, I prepared it as if it's got an emergency clause. If it's adopted, it becomes immediately, immediately effective. But that doesn't mean it has to be adopted tonight. That's, that's for the budgetary folks to decide. I, I just did the legal aspect.
Right, okay.
You, you could discuss it and announce it and put it in a paper and then adopt it in January. That'll give everybody, that may have you a bunch of people coming and talking about it. But that's up to y'all as a council to decide whether you want to adopt it tonight. That's strictly up to you.
I think Howard was going, uh, something, I just talked about some things that, like when you send out your, uh, electrical bill, when you send that out in an envelope, is there something you could put in there? And that means that every, uh, citizens that's got a, that's paying for one will get something. Could you not do something like that to let them know, like this presentation that you're giving us tonight? Uh, and I think in some of the things that you were saying, that legislation is getting ready to be passed, and we have not gotten on board for that, and I believe I heard you say that. That could be something that you put in your communication when it goes out to our citizens. I, I would suggest that if we pass it and when we pass it or adopt it, that, uh, you would also tack that in, that it would get out to our citizens.
You can, we can either put a, a folded page in or, or put a message on the bill itself, I believe.
And I think it also would be good to put it in the media. It's kept like we've been, what we're doing. One thing I found out, we are, you know, we try not to pass rate increases as long as you can. But at some point, you have to.
That, that's usually what makes them.
Some point, you have to. It's not like you have a choice, but the communication board is important. So my, my question is, we have the resolution tonight, the communication part is important. So what do we do, wait another month?
Well, that's, that's, that's why I'm standing before y'all, to see what y'all want to do.
If it is another month, does that throw you, does that throw you past a budget period?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, great, man. We're hung right now with the budget committee. We're hung because of our contract with Swatco, we got money wrong. If we don't, we cannot adopt a deficit budget. I mean, it's against the law, we can't do it. And as it stands right now, that, that's what we're trying to do, to find money, put in there to create that. If we come up to the end of January and we've got a deficit budget, you can't operate, but you got shut out. So we're trying, and this is one of them. There's gonna, to be honest with you, there's gonna be other money that we're gonna have to come find. I mean, this is not, this is, it's serious. I'm just telling you, it's serious. And with this electric contract we've got, I mean, we got to have the money. It's got to come from somewhere. And we're out, we're, the, the budget committee is gonna, has to have options about where we're going, where the money's gonna come from. I don't, I don't want to say much more than that, except we got, we got a problem.
That's what's passing his own, I don't think, really thinks the option. I mean, it's gotta be done, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't communicate. But you got to count that one eighty-five, or you got to find one eighty-five somewhere.
Barry, a question, uh, from a relative standpoint, is there any publication out there that tells us what other cities of similar size are charging and how we pair up with that? Are we pretty low on the total?
We're, we're, we're pretty low on that. Bruce, what is it, your, your mail over?
My national water bill, if it was open, I would pay about sixty dollars a month. No, we're doing like forty-two.
Yeah.
And that would be something that you could put in your communication. Uh, I just, the communication part, we're not doing that, and that's, if, if, we need to do that part. And if they still gonna talk, they still gonna talk, but we need to do the communication part.
So I'm, I'm of course agree about the communication part. In order to, in order for the budget committee to move, we got to propose that we do that increase. Now, do we do it one, or, one at a time, or rural and city?
There's, there's two ordinances, one for the rural water and one for the city water, because that's two separate departments, the way it's set up. Yes, ma'am.
How soon could, because the citizens are present, are gonna feel like they're the ones that's being targeted. And how soon could we get?
It's not that they want us to be.
I understand that, but that's not the way they think.
Okay.
How soon would they, could we get this out to them that this is going, you know, we got, we're at no other choice?
We, we send out bills over four cycles, three city cycles and one rural cycle. I'm not sure exactly the dates, Larry knows the dates.
You take a full month, you reach everybody.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at.
If you send out on the tenth point or the third, so.
People take the full month.
Everybody, take the thirty days before you reach your budget. Actually, about forty days, kind of, but this may only be about that.
Yeah, I, I suggest we do that, but I also would suggest we, whatever we're gonna send out, we put it in the paper. But the budget committee has to know how to count the money.
Yeah.
We don't have any more.
And also, early in 2023, you're gonna have to go up on your trash, which you're one of the cheapest around, and the profit margin because of all the expenses and inflation has really went up on sanitation also. So.
It's just something we gotta do. So.
Well, perhaps we can let them know now too, that the trash is gonna have to go up eventually in 2023 too. You know, give them a heads up on that.
Communication board probably should be standard operating procedure. Hopefully we can get the world, we, we communicated, but at this point, in reference to what we're trying to do right, we, we, we have to get our ordinance. And if we don't pass it, we don't have any. But you can tell them, if we don't, if we don't pass this, then we hung up by the end of the year.
I might, I might want to know where the money came from.
So I moved it, we, separate, we're gonna increase on the water based on the information you gave us and, and making sure that we communicate to the citizens exactly why we're doing it. You, you let, you listen to a lot of reason.
Right.
And one of them is that we have bonds.
Yeah.
And if we don't do it, somebody gonna do it for us.
Right.
They're not gonna, explain that part, explain, explain that part to them.
Yeah, we also, a lot of our, uh, the city operates, a lot of their improvements and all were done through utility bonds. And utility bonds, they stretch out there for thirty years. And you're obligated on a regular basis to pay that bond back. And you're also obligated to remain solvent to pay it back. That's one of the, the requirements of being able to get the bond. And if we don't remain solvent, we don't get any more bonds. We don't get any more, no longer able to, to borrow money if you don't remain solvent. Is that not correct?
I have a question. Water bill and garbage bill, they're the same deal, but they're separate.
Yes, well, the water, the sewer, the, and the garbage are all, water, sewer, electric, garbage are all on one bill.
So if, if they, if we already know they all have to be increased, why not increase them all at once instead of getting one this time and one next time because it's gonna look worse to the public? If you increase this today and then next month you increase something else?
Each, each department is individual and has to operate individual, but together as a, as a whole. And each one has to meet its own budget, separate from the whole. So each one is handled separately.
A little bit of work, yeah.
Well, that's, that's up to the council if they want to do it that way. I'm with the water and sewer, so tonight I'm proposing water, because that's, that's my plan. And that's the one that's taken a big hit in the last couple of years, struggling to keep going.
What she's saying, I don't want to take her thought. I think what she's saying that when we send this communication out, go ahead and put in there, your garbage rates are gonna go up as well. That needs to go in there as well, because the mayor has said that it has, it's going up.
Right, yeah, it's.
And the garbage person is not here to present like you are. And if that's in the communication, then when he does come, you know, we'll be ready to operate. I believe, I think that's making.
Yeah, that's. That certainly could be handled that way.
So, Mayor, I propose we, uh, prove the ordinance for the water increase and more that the citizens are gonna be commutated because, only if we don't have.
Time to wait a month.
We don't have time to wait a month. That money has to be accounted for, or we got a real problem come January, because you cannot have a budget in a deficit. Period.
Did you make a motion?
He made a motion, but it hasn't accepted, so that motion is dead.
It is dead then.
It's somebody else that made the motion.
It's somebody else.
But if the budget committee and everyone knew this was coming up, why are we waiting till the last minute? Where you got to get it in, it was sad.
If you already knew this, we have.
We learned that, we, we learned that, basically about where the cuts gonna come from. Then there gonna be other cuts, so there gonna, there gonna be deep cuts because it have to be. It'll be proposed to the council, the council will decide. But a lot of things the city used to be able to do, they don't want it to do. And it's gonna be a lot of unpleasant things. I mean, we didn't, we just learned about this much of a deficit last week. And we get into the better. One thing we do is we hesitate to raise rates when we should be raising. We hesitate, then we get behind, and then you wind up where we are. So the motion did, but I'm against somebody else having it.
Mr. Mayor, I move, Patricia Roberts, I move the adoption ordinance, is it ordinance number four? Ordinance number four?
What number you got, John?
I've got four, two and three.
Two and three.
Two and, two and three.
Two.
It says four on here, it says four.
That's nineteen sixty-four.
That's, that's the.
And ordinance four, two thousand seventeen.
This year, uh, with the new rates, uh, written in beside it.
And I think I have a second right, I have a second.
You got the number for this year?
Yeah.
Okay, then which one, which one is gonna be two?
Uh, I've got the rural waters two.
Yeah.
Oh, rural waters two, and, yeah, and cities three, cities three, whichever. I made a motion to read the ordinance.
We got a, we had that two to the ordinance, nobody heard motion yet.
She made a motion. I'm gonna stack that one. I'm stacking that motion.
What was her motion?
Go ahead, because people can talk to you, Pat.
I move to amend the ordinance for the, for the water, for the rural and for the city.
And you said?
That's it.
We gotta do them individually, we gotta address them individually.
Individually?
Because they have to be read, voted on, approved, sent. I know that's kind of boring, you know? But it's, there's a legal reason for it.
Which one are you doing first, John?
Uh, rural water. First, I've got to make sure people are voting for it. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks? Austin?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
And what, now let me bet again, make sure.
Two.
Two, okay.
The rural water is two and the city is three, I got it. Now, why don't you go and try to get a motion to read this, or is that four? Is that, how kind of confused you?
You introduce, the motion was, I asked me to introduce it, now you're reading it.
Now I read it, okay, guys, bear with me.
In its entirety?
Yeah. City of Prescott ordinance two of twenty twenty-two and ordinance two amend ordinance number five of twenty seventeen, which amended, which amended ordinance number one of two thousand and three as previously amended by ordinance two of two thousand and twelve to establish new rural water rates and prescribing other matters relating thereto and declaring emergency. Whereas, it is now necessary for the rates for rural water services provided by the city of Prescott, Arkansas, to be increased and, whereas the rates of, for rural water services provided by the city of Prescott, Arkansas, have previously been established by ordinance number one of two thousand and three, which ordinance was previously amended by ordinance number two of two thousand and twelve and ordinance number five of two thousand and seventeen. And whereas, it is the purpose of this ordinance to amend ordinance number five of two thousand and seventeen solely with respect to the repeal and deletion of that portion of section one of said ordinance number five of two thousand and seventeen dealing solely with water rates, solely for the purpose of establishing new monthly water rate charges for the city of Prescott rural water system customers. Be it now, therefore ordained by the city council for the city, council for the city of Prescott, Arkansas in regular section, section one, new monthly water rate schedule for the city of Prescott rural water system customers. That section one of ordinance five, number five of two thousand and seventeen, as it previously amended ordinance number one of two thousand and three and ordinance number two of two thousand and twelve, is hereby amended to delete and repeal in its entirety section one of said ordinance number five of two thousand and seventeen. And in substitution and replacement of said and deleted and repealed language, the following new water rate schedule is hereby affirmed and declared to establish fair, reasonable and necessary minimum water service rates and shall be, and they are hereby adopted and fixed as rates to be charged for water services to be rendered by the city to customers subscribing to the city of Prescott rural water system. Monthly water, or eight, monthly water rates. The water usage for each customer of the city of Prescott rural water system shall be determined each month by meter measurement and the amount to be paid by each customer shall be computed on the basis of the following schedule of rates. One, basic monthly fee for water consumption. A for three-quarter inch service, thirty-five dollars and seventy-six cents per month. B for one-inch service, thirty-six dollars and twenty cents per month. C for two-inch service, thirty-nine dollars, six-six-point-one, uh, point six-six-one cents per month. For three-inch service, forty-two dollars and six cents per month. For four-inch service, forty-four dollars and eighty-one cents per month. For six-inch service, fifty dollars and thirty-one cents per, per month. For a water service in excess of six inches, the basic monthly fee, service fee will be determined based on the cost of the meter setting divided by twenty-five plus eight dollars for maintenance and operation. Two, in addition to the basic monthly service fee, there will be a charge to each user for all water consumption proportion thereof per month for all service sizes as follows, three dollars for, per one thousand gallons. Section two, repealer. Section one of ordinance five of two thousand and seventeen, to the extent it established the water service rate and charges, is specifically repealed and in all other rates respects. Only other city Prescott ordinances in direct conflict with this ordinances are repealed. And to the extent that said prior ordinances are not in conflict, they shall remain in full force effect. Section three, separability. That the vision of these ordinances are separable and if a section, phrase or provision shall be declared invalid, such invalidity shall not affect the validity of the remainder of the ordinance. Section four, emergency. This ordinance being necessary for health and welfare and safety of the citizens receiving rural water services from the city of Prescott. An emergency is hereby declared, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon adoption. This ordinance is adopted by the city council in regular section on this nineteenth day of December two thousand and twenty-two.
Now, what you just read, I'm sorry.
No, but I'm not done yet. Said certificate, the other side is hereby certified that the above ordinance is true and correct compared to a copy of the ordinance number two of two thousand and twenty-two adopted by the city council for the city of Prescott at a regular city council meeting on December twenty-second, oh, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, dated as of today, December two thousand and twenty-two.
I, I don't have that sheet. I don't have that.
You don't have the certificate?
I don't have that sheet.
I got plenty of copies here, it is.
See, I don't have that.
Everybody in, one, I'll go. Spread them again.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that sheet.
Okay, uh, what do you, motion for the?
Spin, move, spin, move, read by title.
Read by title, yeah.
So move, yeah.
Hey, Curry?
Yes, sir.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks? Austin?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy? Hicks?
Yes.
Okay. City of Prescott ordinance two of two thousand and twenty-two and ordinance two amend ordinance number five of two thousand and seventeen, which amended ordinance number one of two thousand and three as previously amended by ordinance number two of two thousand and twelve to establish new water, new rural water rates and prescribing other matters relating to, relating thereto and declaring emergency. We in motion to suspend rules and?
Suspend the rules for the third, last time, read it down on.
How much we suspend the rule and read it down on?
Okay, who, who second?
Call.
Okay, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
City of Prescott ordinance number two of two thousand and twenty-two and ordinance to amend ordinance number five of two thousand and seventeen, which amended ordinance number one of two thousand and three as previously amended by ordinance number two of two thousand and twelve to establish new rural water rates and prescribing other matters relating to, relating thereto and declaring emergency. Now, move to proof, right?
Move to a dot.
Move to a dot.
I said move.
Second.
Yes.
Okay, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Meeks? Austin?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Okay. That'll be done.
City of Prescott ordinance number three of two thousand and twenty-two. An ordinance to amend ordinance number four of two thousand and seventeen as previously amended by various ordinances adopted over the years by the city of Prescott solely for the purpose to repeal the existing water rate schedule and to establish a new water rate schedule for the citizens of Prescott, Arkansas. And to retain all other substantive provisions set forth and contained in specifically ordinance number four, nineteen sixty-four, and ordinance number four of two thousand and seventeen. And prescribe other matters relating thereto and declaring an emergency. Whereas, the city of Prescott, Arkansas has adopted various ordinance and amended thereto over the years to establish rates and charges for water services provided to its citizens. And by such prior amendments, it has repealed all previous water rate schedule and charges contained in said ordinances solely with respect to new water rate schedule charged to its citizens, and it has specifically retained by said am mendatory ordinances previously adopted the other substantive provisions and sections of ordinance number four of nineteen sixty-four that do not pertain to water rate charges. And whereas, it has now become necessary for the city to establish a new water rate schedule and uses charges for its citizens for which purpose this ordinance is being adopted. And whereas, it is the intent of this ordinance to solely amend, to repeal the water rate schedule and uses charges as set forth in section one of ordinance number four of two thousand and seventeen and to retain any and all substantive provisions and regulations set forth in ordinance number four nineteen sixty-four and ordinance four of two thousand and seventeen, which pertain specifically but not way of limitation to water connection charges and other substantive emergency non-water rate related provisions set forth in said ordinance number four nineteen sixty-four and ordinance number four two thousand and seventeen. Be it now, therefore ordained by the city council for the city council for, ordained by the city council for the city council for the city of Prescott, Arkansas in regular session. Section one, new water rate schedule for the citizens of Prescott, Arkansas. That section one of ordinance number four of two thousand and twenty-two. That section one of ordinance number four of two thousand seventeen, as it amended and repealed the water rate schedule established and fixed in prior city of Prescott ordinances, is amended to repeal said section one and in substitution and replacement of said deleted and repealed language, the following new water rate schedule is declared and determined to conf, to contain fair, reasonable, and necessary minimum water rates to be rendered and charged by the city to its citizens subscribing to the city water system and accordingly. The following new water rate schedule for the citizens of Prescott is hereby adopted on the meter size for residents. Three quarter inch will be twenty-one sixty-three, one inch will be twenty-two twenty-nine, one and a quarter inch will be twenty-two ninety-five, one and a half inch will be twenty-three sixty-one, and two inch will be twenty-five fifty-nine. For commercial, the minimum monthly charge, three fourth of an inch will be twenty-three sixty-one, one inch will be twenty-four twenty-seven, one and a quarter inch will be twenty-four ninety-three, one and a half inch will be twenty-five fifty-nine, two inch will be twenty-seven ninety. Plus three dollars per one thousand gallons of water used. Any water connections to the city water mains will be charged a connection fee for any dimension of tap size based on the city's actual cost of service line material incurred at the time of connection as determined by the superintendent of the city's water system in parentheses, the superintendent, in order to complete the installation and connection. This approach and charge is utilized rather than establishing a fixed fee in recognition of the fact that construction costs may well fluctuate up or down. And this approach allows the customer to benefit from any decrease, decrease in material costs and the city to avoid any loss due to increases in material costs. The materials utilized by the city will be standard waterworks material for the type, brand, and style of water meter and water line used as determined by the superintendent. Any customer designed a water meter bypass to be installed with a two inch water connection will be charged the additional cost for such installation. Section two repealer. Section one of ordinance number four of two thousand seventeen is repealed with respect solely to any water rate changes as set forth therein and all other language in said ordinance and all other ordinances and parts thereof in conflict here, here with or hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict and all other substantive and regulatory provisions of ordinance number four of nineteen sixty-four and other ordinances which are not water rate related and not in conflict here with shall be and remain in full force and effect. Section three severability. That the provisions this ordinance are separable. And if a section, phrase, or provision shall be declared invalid, such declarations shall not affect the validity of the remainder of the ordinance. Section four emergency. This ordinance being necessary for the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Prescott in an emergency is hereby declared and this ordinance shall be become effective immediately upon adoption. This ordinance is adopted by the city council in regular session on this the nineteenth day of December two thousand twenty-two. The undersigned does hereby certify that the above ordinance is a true, correct, and comparative copy of ordinance number three adopted by the city council for the city of Prescott, Arkansas at a regular council meeting on December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Need motion to go to the, suspend rules and read by title only?
Mary Morris, this is her.
Okay, city of Prescott ordinance number three of two thousand twenty-two and ordinance to amend ordinance number four of two thousand seventeen as previously amended by various ordinances adopted over the years by the city of Prescott solely for the purpose to repeal the existing water rate schedule and establish a new water rate schedule for citizens of Prescott, Arkansas and to retain all other substantive provisions set forth and contained in specifically ordinance number four of nineteen sixty-four and ordinance number four of two thousand seventeen and prescribe other matters relating thereto and declaring an emergency.
John, is that bold on that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I kinda jumped the gun there. Sorry about that. Sorry. Yeah, okay.
Sorry.
That's what did my fault, I got, got hurry. I needed the precious. Okay, Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna try this again. Okay, the city of, city of Prescott ordinance number three of two thousand twenty-two and ordinance to amend ordinance number four of two thousand seventeen as previously amended by various ordinances adopted over the years by the city of Prescott solely for the purpose of to repeal the existing water rate schedule and to establish a new water rate schedule for the citizens of Prescott, Arkansas and to retain all other substantive provisions set forth and contained in specifically ordinance number four of nineteen sixty-four and ordinance number four of two thousand seventeen and prescribe other matters relating thereto and declaring an emergency. Okay, we need suspend rules and go to the?
Title only for the last.
Title only, to adopt this thing. Should we move? Okay.
You give a vote?
I'm about to do, well, about to do that. It's been a long one. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
City of Prescott ordinance number three of two thousand twenty-three and ordinance to amend ordinance number four of two thousand seventeen as previously amended by various ordinances adopted over the years by the city of Prescott solely for the purpose to repeal the existing water rate schedule and to establish a new water rate schedule for the citizens of Prescott, Arkansas and to retain all other substantive provisions set forth and contained in specifically ordinance number four of nineteen sixty-four and ordinance number four of two thousand seventeen and prescribe other matters relating to, relating thereto and declaring an emergency. That would be put out. Correct?
Right.
Okay, we need motion to adopt.
Move that we adopt ordinance number three.
And second. Curry?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Still proof. All right, John, need to read anymore, right?
Try.
Good.
Please, please, okay, yeah, cards. Okay, we'll probably pick it up, please. Okay, we have with Mr. Jerry Estes tonight. His discussion item will be potlatch.
Uh, yeah, uh, it's not my question, it's, uh, from the community. Uh, they've expressed that, uh, there's not enough transparency. Uh, I did check out today at the, uh, what do you call it, uh, where you pay your taxes and you do your assessment, uh, nice people there, just checking for me and, uh, what was it, in twenty-ten, potlatch sold to some company or firm out of state, uh, I guess, for three hundred thousand dollars and then December twenty-fourteen, city of Prescott bought it back for six hundred and forty thousand dollars. And, uh, someone had told me that there was a meeting here not long ago, uh, about potlatch, but it was kind of closed for a meeting and people were wanting to know what's going on. Uh, yeah, with a purchase like that, no wonder, no wonder, when you get money problems.
Uh, Mary, would you like to speak on that?
Uh, I'm, I'm not looking for an answer right now, maybe it should come out in the paper, you know, about that, uh.
Could you tell them how much it was appraised for when we purchased it?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the Dudley family in Alabama, what they paid potlatch for, but it was definitely over three hundred and forty. The city did buy from the Dudley's for six forty and it's currently appraised at two point eight.
Well, that's pretty good, well, this, people just want to know that. Uh, what has me hearing your meetings is, uh, I've been kind of in a bad mood for a year now because on the fourteenth, since the fourteenth of December last year, uh, between then and December second of this year, uh, I've been the victim of five, uh, civil rights violations. And, uh, I was looking, things were looking up, but I just seen word, one fourth amendment violation, uh, not in the state, but it's still a federal violation, a fourth amendment with, uh, just minimal intrusion, it settled for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so I was starting to look up, but, you know, kind of like, y'all got all these money problems. But anyway, I'll see y'all later.
Thank you, Mr. Estes.
Mr. Estes, let me give you my card.
Well, I, it wasn't even my question, I don't even care, so.
Come see me tomorrow and I'll tell you.
Why?
You don't want, I can give you more details on potlatch.
Oh, I'm not interested in potlatch. That's all, I was prepared to pass the ball over there. I love you guys.
All right. Uh, we got any discussions or announcements from the council?
I, I have one, one, one thing to just keep, I hate to keep bringing it up, but I, I need to really, I have a concern. And, and, uh, my concern is our city attorney. According to, to what the information I have from back to now, if I'm right or wrong, correct me, y'all think this is Glenn's last meeting with the council, is that correct? If it is, I, I feel awfully saddened to see him go, but I know he had a point where he says he's going to retire. And if he's going to retire and this is his last meeting, I'm concerned that, do we have another city attorney that's going to be here to help us? That's my.
Somebody, just like to comment, uh, just before we further, I, as y'all made a call, it's, ours, addressing, uh, back in February, I submitted a letter to the mayor and the council advising that, uh, affected the end of this year, December thirty-first, I would be presiding as city attorney. And, uh, certainly, I would tell you, it's been my honor and privilege for over thirty years to serve as attorney for the city. I conscientiously endeavor to, uh, provide those services in a highly professional, capable, and ethical manner. And I hope you agree that I achieved that goal. And it's kind of an end of tradition in a way, it's sad to me, but I, I just feel it's appropriate time for me personally. Uh, but our firm probably has been attorney for the city for maybe over sixty or seventy years because when I came down to McCray, then attorney for the city, then Jim was, and then myself. Certainly, uh, it's been a privilege for me and I thank you for allowing me that opportunity and, uh, uh, certainly will be glad to work in transition with my successor, which, uh, that's one reason I wrote the letter so far back, I was hoping somebody, it's, it's, it's amazing to me, it's a, an elected position, believe it or not, but no one's ever run for office in the past fifty years that I've been here. And in fact, I don't know that they ever ran before I came. But, uh, that's one reason I announced is to allow that opportunity for someone, no one elected to run and I thought that would also afford the city ample opportunity to find a successor. But, uh, I appreciate the privilege of serving and I thank you, I hope you feel like I've done the kind of job that the citizens and the leadership and youth officials deserve. And I certainly strive to do that and, uh, again, I'll be glad to work with a successor as soon as you determine who that might be. But I, I'm not going to continue, so you need to do that as soon as you possibly can.
Let's give Glenn a standing ovation for thirty-plus years. All righty, anybody got anything else?
Yeah, I just want to, so this is a bad news for December. So, but I want to know if the possibility to have, whether there is a source, you know, make a transition to, then I'll try.
So.
Well, I, I just, I, I, the worry I have about that is, the more you do that, the less likely is you can seek a successor. You need to do that, really. You need to get, I, I, you know, there's lots of important things going on, that y'all need someone and really, I, I'm not trying to say age is, age provides some experience and knowledge and wisdom that youth doesn't, but youthful enthusiasm, there's a lot to be committed for that and I think you need to seek someone that, uh, can, can help achieve some of these challenges where you need a city and that we've got this power system as Larry well knows and it contributes to really complex legal problems that not just everybody, you gotta learn to deal with them over the years and, uh, it's kind of something that somebody needs to get on board and start learning how to do that. Of course, we do have specialists that we consult that just, that's all they do and that's, that's a good thing. But, uh, I, I urge you to try to make a decision and I don't know, I'm sure efforts have been made to try to contact somebody and the unfortunate thing about Prescott is we don't, when I came fifty years ago, we had fifteen lawyers. And, you know, and lots of pretty dead gun good ones too, I might add, and the same thing in Hope, but now rural Arkansas is a victim of medical deficiencies. Hospital, we don't even have a hospital, had a beautiful one, a hospital for many years and it's not there now. And we also have a lot of good lawyers and they're just, this is a professional deficiency in rural Arkansas, it's not unique to Prescott. In fact, that legal services is expanding all the time because they got to be available to provide legal services because there's not no lawyers who can provide them, so I'm not preaching to the choir, I know y'all probably realize all that, but it is, it's a serious problem. I try to get very interested, but, uh, very, it's just, about, not many years less than I am, about five or six years less than I am. And of course, I'm not going to say, but he's having his serious medical problems himself, so, uh, anyway, I, I, I'll be glad to consult with whoever y'all hire to kind of transition and to help hold his hand or her hand to make the transition as smooth and seamless as possible, so I would urge you to radically move, move fast, as much as fast as you can, which, as the mayor well knows and others, we're facing some serious problems right now, we need to get them right. And Perry's point and, and Carl's point are budgetary problems. And there's not a city, our county in South Arkansas, that's not facing the same problems because we've lost population and other things that create these kind of problems and we're just placing them at middle of it. It's not something that's fun to deal with, with the citizens, because they know we're going to hear it, but, but I, I'll shut up, I'm not, I'm preaching to the choir.
We appreciate it, I, I'd just like to thank my colleagues on the city council, this is a very difficult job and sometime we're accused of having one meeting a month. I don't know how many meetings I have a month, but I know many of my colleagues are in the meetings with me. So I don't know how anyone else would know how many. so I don't know how anyone else would know how many we have. We meet when we need to meet, and, uh, salary should not be especially with the money crunch that we have. I don't think people should be saying we make a salary that we don't make. Nobody on the city council made five hundred a month.
No.
And everybody on the city council meet when they're asked. And the thing about the light bill, the mayor had, we had a citizen come in a few weeks ago. He had concerns. He was very professional. He was not anonymous. He stood face to face with us. He shared his concern, and the mayor gave him answers, and he got documentation, and that's, that's how it is. But to say that the city council is doing nothing about the light bill is just not true. The mayor told the citizen that we had spent about a million dollars trying to make things better for the citizens in this community. A million dollars ain't nothing. It's, it's quite an effort, and we're still, still having an effort. Just probably we don't get the results we like. It doesn't mean that the people up here is doing nothing. So I kind of, I kind of resent those accusations, and so I'm letting folk know I do. Photograph it. We're doing all we can do to make our city better. Everything we can do. There's going to be some things, a lot of people get upset when you can't afford to do things, I mean. And I can tell you something, there's going to be a whole lot of upset people, because we got to do some serious cutting around here. And so we hope that people understand we really have financial points, and the way out is to spend less and find revenue to bring in. That's our task, and we're just going to work with it to get it done. That's the message. Thank you for the time, brother.
Yes, sir. All right, anybody got anything else?
Mayor, I heard the city a couple of calls about the solar, about the solar grid.
Yeah.
What can you tell us on that? I, I mean, they probably, I didn't even know a thing about it.
Well, it's.
Not good to say, right?
It's the Prescott public schools. Like, you know what, you can say that.
It's the school system, the solar. It's going to shave off on their bills, help them save some money on their light bill for school. It's been going on probably for about a year and a half now. We discussed it here at one point. I'm not telling council members that it's coming in. I don't remember when it's been, it's been about a year, year and a half again. It's been in the works for a good while. They just now started the physical aspect of it down there at the middle schools, so.
It was discussed that the school was what we do, when you, you said we would, we had discussed, discussions about it a year ago. I remember discussing it with one of the citizens, but we're not with the school.
We discussed the school. The school had a meeting about it, and then we discussed what the losses would be at one of our meetings here.
All right.
Can they legally do that?
Just land. Yeah, it's, it's no different than a, a citizen putting in solar at their house.
Okay, just public schools, it's no different from a citizen.
Business. Any business or citizen can put in solar if they so desire, as long as they follow the guidelines. We adopted an ordinance on that.
Net metering ordinance.
Yeah, two, two years ago.
Yeah, two years ago.
So how does that work? I mean, how, they already started to do?
No, man, we're not finished with it yet. Once they finish with it, we'll generate electricity, put it back on the system. We'll keep a record of that, and they'll take it off their bill every month.
Okay, so will they lose from their own grant to that person?
Well, we will, we'll lose revenue from it, yes, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we'll lose revenue. It's a pretty good chunk of money, if they don't save on their bills, we'll lose.
I have another question about asking for.
Okay, I'll be asking business, if anybody need that.
Anybody got anything else? Can we get a motion to adjourn?